This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we'll call to order the Monterey Select Board on April 16th at 6:00 PM. We have all three members present here in town hall. The very first item of business is the winter overtime deficit spending. So we were alerted by the treasurer that we are over budget, which we're legally allowed to do. And I'm also thinking that we should request a reserve fund transfer to cover the overage, which will prevent us from having to add it on to next year's tax limit. So.
What was the overage, your member?
Eighty-four hundred dollars.
And I believe Eileen, at the last time, when this first came up, said that they had made any transfers, so I'm all in favor. I mean, I know it's not the end of the year yet, but it's mid-April. Forget it.
Let me go print out that letter, too. Did you see that draft letter?
I did, and I just sent my suggestion.
It was one ahead. If you have, print out Susan's, with Susan's edits.
Yes, sir. You sent those to her?
Yes.
Eight thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and eight cents.
I, I wish it was worth.
I'm just gonna put it out. How is that amount? The original appropriation was twenty-two thousand five hundred.
For so and so?
For winter overtime.
Okay.
Which were previously two separate.
Right, we, we just combined.
Winter overtime is twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Mickey, did you have a question? You made a face.
Mickey gave a face, sorry about that.
No, you just, you were like, I was like, oh.
Just to know, is that there at winter that we got overtime?
You know, those two categories. You think that, but sometime, I think freezing rain is, is, is as many hours, if not worse, right? Like because what you're trying to do.
Yeah, that's what I started thinking, different kinds of stuff.
Instead of plowing, they're trying to, they're, they're spreading that the ice are gonna try to prevent people.
That's sort of large.
Getting on black ice, yeah.
Yeah, and so you end up with a lot of columns.
Yep.
And and what else has happened, Mickey, is that we haven't raised that account in years, and yet salary rate, pay, rates of pay have increased as a number of employees. It's only been a year or two that we've had a fully staffed
Yeah, it's been a while.
superintendent and four other members.
No, it's just those things had to go through the mind. Yeah, it was wet.
Yeah.
And windy, too.
So I'll move that we both authorize the deficit spending in the winter highway overtime account and also simultaneously make a reserve fund transfer request to the Finance Committee for the eight thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and eight cents.
I'll say.
Is there any other discussion? All right, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, let's see, there's, oh, there's only one second.
You might need a coffee.
Roger, can that please be submitted to the Finance Committee?
Yes.
And if there's further deficit spending, we'll do the same in highway winter overtime, which I don't expect that there will be, but I probably shouldn't have said that.
I hope y'all can help save that.
They may.
So we have kind of, the next three agenda items are all intertwined. It's just the warrant, the budget, and the cover letter.
Do we want to cover the budget once the Finance Committee's here? Or do we want to start with the cover letter part?
Let's start with the cover letter.
Yeah.
I want to say one thing about the budget. We all looked at the same stretch since January or something, and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the library loan wasn't included.
I don't understand, I could have sworn, I went back and looked at one that's like from two months ago, and it was in there.
It was in there, it just wasn't added in.
It wasn't added to the subtotally, I'm almost certain.
Oh, it sort of appeared horizontally.
It did add the subtotally. And I can with almost, almost certainly tell you what happened. So I kept looking at the numbers throughout these last few months and going, that seems really low. And if you take about ten seconds to add the numbers up, it's thirty-two thousand dollars, a lot of a hundred thousand, it's thirty percent off. I can almost with certainty tell you what happened, which is that we, this year, split up principal and interest, principal and interest. And when you go to add a row below, it adds a row, but it doesn't add it into the calculation that totals that section.
Should that. Which it should, it should, it sounds should.
Try it, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Does it?
Because it sees that, it sees that equation, and it only takes the, um, the spaces in between the equation. So if you go like this sum.
I guess it depends where you did it, but if you did sum of A-10 to A-15, and you put a line at A-12.
It would add.
It would add.
But it do add, but it's the bottom. It's not stupid. You know, sometimes it's stupid.
But if you put it at the bottom or the top, it can strip it up. Okay, got it.
Yeah, so we were thirty-two thousand dollars off for
Okay.
since, you know, the whole time we knew.
I didn't, because I looked, and I'm like, it's there, what are you talking about? Get it added, I got it now.
I think every one of us looked horizontally.
Yeah, exactly.
Vertical.
Yeah. Well done.
The redeeming thing is, you'd think, okay, well, it shoots the budget up thirty-two thousand. But
It got caught in a different.
It also didn't count in thirty-five thousand. So we added thirty-two thousand this year, and we added thirty-five thousand last year. One of the ways that I realized is I went to the town meeting minutes from last year and realized that our FY24 approved was thirty-five thousand dollars off.
Uh, our FY?
At the end of the budget.
At the end of the budget last year for what, the very total?
At the very, very end of the budget, if you go to FY24 approved.
Yeah.
That number was thirty-five thousand dollars off.
Oh.
So we added.
Wait, this, which way, was it, did we actually approve thirty-five thousand dollars more or less?
That's what we approved. Minus a cent or two. I can't get the cents to work out. One of the problems with Excel when having is it rounds the numbers when it shows them on here, but it keeps in its mind
It goes to more decimal places.
And so it adds them together, and that's actually a cent off from what we actually did last year, but I just. Mickey actually did the legwork and found out that we're off a cent in three places.
Well, one was, the, the first item, just general governor was like up a penny, and the next item was down a penny, so that balances itself out. And then the end was off a penny.
So that's.
Corrected that, I looked at that. But I get the point, it's annoying. Um, okay.
So, um.
And it's fixed now, is your point, right?
It's fixed right now. Um, so we have the warrant. Yeah, the warrant letter, sorry. One thing I would do, I kind of drafted this in a hurry at, at lunchtime. I realize there's three pleases in, in four sentences.
Right.
In the very first paragraph, this is, I'm not picky, but maybe just delete, please see below for some explanations.
Right.
Is that in Article VII?
No, the very first, the very first paragraph. So it opens with please, and then has please and please, so, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I see, yeah, I, I. We can just delete that whole sentence.
I was gonna.
And, and maybe just delete also from, if we're deleting that small sentence, delete also from the sentence that follows.
Yeah.
Or maybe just instead of saying, please feel free, say, and feel free. That gets us down to only one.
So we start with operating budget, we have a, a brief explanation, cost of living, adjustment. An explanation of fire department compensation. Uh, IT expenses, we have some.
So basically, I'm suggesting we cut that, make it a bit smaller, because honestly, I don't think people, like the bottom line is, our, our person retired, right? So I was suggesting replacing that first thing that starts, that's had the darker blue with with retirement of our former service provider, the town's engaging a new IT firm to help us upgrade our equipment, software, data storage, and most important, cybersecurity, as well as providing technical support. And then the rest of that would also be.
So you would take, you would take that commented area and fill all this highlight up?
Basically, everything from in all the way down to initially with acumen.
Yeah, I get you. That's good.
Yep. Yeah, I, I think I also didn't always know in my sections, because I didn't really know how each person was handling it, how in-depth to go.
And I was basically.
Too long.
Yeah, that's it, I was, I was trying to be as short as possible, and I, I actually, somebody wrote more on the fire department, I think my board was even smaller, because I was like, oh my God, I gotta get it all out of one page, or so, so, two sentences, I wanted two sentences.
Well, it is gonna be legal. It is gonna be legal.
But that's, that was my, in my head, try to keep it as short as possible. I was thinking one thing before I forget. Um, why don't we actually, they'll probably get this before April 25th, right? Or will they? If we sign, if we actually print it and sign it either tonight or tomorrow, and it goes to the printers and it goes out, how likely is it?
Fifty percent. Because.
That is horrible.
I know, but I was thinking we should put the budget briefing up here.
Yeah, if we know.
Just say, uh, come in, uh, don't forget to go to the Finance Committee's budget briefing, April 25th at the library.
Yeah, put that in here somewhere.
Yeah, maybe at the bottom, maybe in the title or something.
I would put it at the
At the top.
First paragraph.
Oh, good point, yeah.
Because that's really where they should go with questions.
So maybe instead of just please see below for some answers, and, uh, fill for your, your, that sense we cut, please see below for some explanations. Um, come, come to the Finance Committee's budget briefing, April 25th, 6:30 PM, at the library for more details.
Yep.
Can we make that, like, bold or print?
Yeah, either bold or italics or something, so I said.
Italics.
Yeah.
We can write, please come to the, to the library, six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars remaining.
Wow, the donation, if you're charged a mission.
It's a nice even number.
She's on the library. Yeah. And look at round numbers, don't give me, don't give me all that stuff.
So.
I like that, Susan, I like that. So additional. Um, I like minimum required. Will both require large payments as well as protected capital, personal, long-range capital plan.
And I, I'm thinking it would be great for us to maybe have available file, a lot of, like, even if it's just five years of the capital plan. Do you know how many people don't even realize we have one? It's kind of sad.
We haven't looked at it this year, is one thing.
Well, I looked at it, I looked at it earlier.
I looked at it.
During the budget.
We didn't maybe do it as.
Not everything has gotten on it, it's all the fire department stuff, not all the department highway.
Basically just the highway.
Yeah, highway, but highway, did they ever put in, the last time I looked, did you have one of the additional shed or some for storm vehicles, did any of that stuff?
No, I think it was all just, it was all just vehicles.
Yeah, it was all.
I think it was like a real.
Didn't the police register get on that too?
Yeah, he has it, the next year and the year before, after, he has one in the.
No, there is other stuff on it, and I think two years ago, we tried to be really thorough, like roofs.
Right, everything, yeah, we put a ton of stuff on it. But it got a little.
But I don't really know where it's at now. And what I, what I meant when I say we didn't look at it is, we didn't look at it as a board.
As a board, yeah.
We need to bring it up today, particularly at the fire.
I mean, is it too late to do that, to give it out at the meeting?
Well, at the meeting.
I think it's worth doing, because people don't realize we have it, and I want them to know.
Well, I think they also need to understand that kind of dollars are spent.
And they need to see that there's a reason we're paying off debt, and there's a reason we're staging when we do things, so that we're not getting hit by everything all at once. I mean, and that every time we put something off, either we're gonna double up, or we're gonna push something else out. And I don't think they see that, they think we're just loading stuff on there without a plan, but we're not.
Even if they don't look at it, at least they had it, and you can say, well, it was there, and that's not my point, if you look at it, and you may not understand it, but.
You didn't read it, yeah.
It's bad.
Are we done with the debt, sir?
Yeah, unless you.
And I, I like the table, by the way, is that you or Roger?
No, this one.
Yeah, I like the table.
I was gonna put the price of the truck after, like, the purchase of the engine tanker truck.
But it's on, it's on there, it's on the budget, so they can see it when they look at it, and it says one article. Yeah, I think they are, yes. Besides, anyone who's lived there more than a couple of years knows that, oh, that's gonna be a lot.
Yeah.
Something wrong with that sentence.
What's that?
Which for the first time last year, the town signed a one-year contract with, it's awkward.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out. It was lunchtime.
So last year was the first time we signed it.
Yeah.
An actual one-year contract.
Maybe which the town now has a one-year contract with. Uh, or with whom, uh, Southern Berkshire ambulance, with whom the town now has a one-year contract.
Oh, speaking of ambulances, do you have questions about the ambulance? None yet. We're talking about the ambulance. Yeah, that's on the agenda, right? Well, we're, we're talking about it right now, because we have a letter in front of a warrant explaining some of the larger increases in ambulances up thirty-six percent. Yeah. And last year was the first year we really paid anything of substance.
Yeah.
So.
You, you actually, me said there was a contract, did you guys actually do paperwork?
Yes, we had, we, we negotiated and signed a contract in Southern Berkshire.
But it didn't have any, any limits on future amounts, and for various reasons, the assessment went up to thirty-six percent to all the towns. We're not, just for the record, we are not happy with the measures that they're using to do the assessment. Um, it's based, it's simply on property values. And we don't think that's fair. Uh, there, most other places that do it, do it on basis of call number?
Other places being outside the Berkshires, or?
No, Lee does it by call number. Um, I, it's a good question, I haven't spoken to, I guess I should now, that I know that Richmond and Westlake, we're gonna be in agreement, and I should find out how they're approaching it. Um, do you know?
Uh, I don't, not yet. I'd be interested in the, in the agreement that you signed as well, if we'll yeah, ask you for a copy.
Yeah, for sure. But there's a lot going on, as you know, and who knows what the future will bring in terms of anybody's services, because all of the small towns that aren't even in SBA, they're struggling with the same issue, staffing, costs, everything.
Um.
Okay.
I, I think those, those, oh, so how did we come up with for NUS? This year saw almost thirty-six percent increase in the assessment from Southern Berkshire ambulances.
With whom the town now has a one-year contract. All six towns served by SBA saw the same increase. And I just added, but we're unsuccessful at the end, because we did try, but nobody's willing to talk about it. They're all, we're just paying. We don't mind, you're the one paying too much.
With the recall special act in Lee Garfield, I maybe went into too much detail about previous votes, but part of the reason I think we're re-proposing both of them is because they passed town meeting, and I wanted to reiterate that.
And I, I think it's wise, people are gonna be like, why, why is this coming back to us? And the answer is, it wasn't our fault. But it passed pretty overwhelmingly, people clearly want it, so the only way we can get it is to do it again. And I don't know about my last line on the Lake Garfield tax system that I think is called for. They don't want to admit that, but it doesn't do us good.
Yeah, I think, there's no doubt if it was a late, like, bad hit pond, where there's no homes around it. You put homes in septic systems, no matter how clean they are, and they're probably pretty clean with today's standards.
You would hope, except remember that, um, old septic's don't have to be changed unless the property changes hands.
But I do know a lot of properties change hands.
That's true, but there's still plenty of properties that have been owned by the same people.
Yeah. I just think it's funny, on, on Bibble Road, my parents are geez, sounds like the second one was owners. And they've only been there for twenty-five years. Because every property is sold at least once or twice.
Jeez.
So there are a lot of sales, too.
Yeah, on our road, everyone's been there the twenty years, twenty-two years I've been in there? Except for the one house that got built, and they've been there the whole time. They didn't, it only, it got built, and it, it's right. Right down to the end of our road, too, even if you, they're technically on art school, but they haven't changed yet. But we're not a little bit, so there you go, okay.
So now, some changes and get them out?
Well, what I'm curious is if Jeff and Eileen are on board, too, and they'll sign off on it.
Do we have to sign it off on?
On the, on the war, letter to go
Cover letter.
Ahead of the warrant, the cover letter.
So we, we don't have to print out more, we just hand ours, he took notes, so here it comes. Yeah, I think I have the cha, I have all my changes on there, but I might have missed one, but. Do you guys wanna, are we going with the budget next, since they're out there?
They are here at 6:30.
Do we have other business to do in between?
We do, a little bit, so we're gonna hold off, oh, well, is there anything else on the warrant other than the budget?
On the warrant, other than the budget, that we want to change?
Yeah, if no one saw any problems. Mickey pointed out that Article 8 requires secret ballot, two-thirds vote, and if we use the clickers, that counts as secret ballot, so we don't need to halt town meeting for ten minutes. But I don't think it hurts to leave on there for now, because I don't, I, it doesn't hurt.
It will still require the two-thirds vote, and we might as well leave it on there, and.
Which is, I don't think it has to be.
Yeah, Mark can just say the, the clickers counted as secret ballot, which it does, and he's, we've done it before, so.
But you.
Did it last time, I think.
But you know what was interesting?
What?
Um, our bylaws require that you vote on debt with secret ballot, right? Well, by secret, I forgot the word in our bylaws, but town council said the clickers count as secret ballot in that case. But when it came to the school merger vote in October, it was by secret ballot, and town councils on, in all eight towns, which included KP Law and us, and said that clickers did not count. So that's why we all had to vote by paper ballot.
I know, but why are they giving us two different answers?
It's, well, it is two different words, one's our bylaws and one's general, national law.
Ah. So we're only having to meet our bylaws for our town meeting? We don't have to meet just national law, too?
Well, national law doesn't require secret ballot.
Okay.
That's just our kind of bylaws, which.
Gotcha, I heard that.
It's just, it's interesting.
It is interesting.
Um, but we don't have any other comments, changes, other than the budget, do we even have changes in the budget?
Yeah, we do.
We do.
Yeah, we do. Sorry.
You're talking a couple things.
Uh, only. Definitely.
Yeah. Oh, one quick thing we can deal with, and you can, you can work your way up here, but is, um is the MO, the memorandum of understanding for
Police department?
The police department. We have a prisoner that goes to town, Great Barrington.
You have a prisoner?
No, no, it's a memorandum of understanding in case we have. Don't help us.
No prisoners, please. Yeah.
But I don't think that, I don't.
No, I think it's only a couple of years, but it does.
I wrote this, I don't know.
Frank's good. Is it a motion?
I made a motion that we accept the letter.
Second.
Oh, this is great.
Oh, yeah, felon.
All right, Frank, you have the four.
I made the motion that we accept this letter that he will sign.
Okay.
It accepts.
And I seconded his motion.
All right, we'll, we'll vote on accepting the prison, a great memorandum of understanding of Great Barrington.
I think maybe we should say jail.
Jail.
Yeah.
Uh, Susan?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Justin, yes. That's unanimous approval. Uh, do you have the original of the MO? Um, it came through, through the, it said copy on the thing. Oh, that was something else, oh, yeah, you have the original, yes. Was three, two.
meetings getting at the hour.
I know, I know.
We don't need to get a shade for that one. Just tone the shade down, we do the job, but wow. It's not you.
All right. Um, in the warrant, I think at this point, we're just dealing with any typos or questions.
Or.
Or changes.
You wanna do it, or you want me to do it?
The warrant or the budget?
The budget, oh, the rest of the warrant?
The warrant.
I didn't have anything.
The warrant.
I didn't have anything else.
No, that, all I've got is budget, too, it's, and we, I think we have the same thing, I'm willing to bet.
Yeah, yeah.
Bye.
All right, you want me to start, Susan?
Go for it.
All right, um, currently for the Monterey Fire Company, we have fifty thousand dollars in the lease agreement. And I'm proposing that we take that to sixty thousand. And the reason is if you there's been a lot of debate, a lot of numbers thrown around about it. I went and spent a little time, and if you look at their Monterey Fire Company's, um taxes, they said it costs forty-seven point three thousand, forty-seven thousand dollars to their expenses for the fire company last year.
What kind of taxes?
But you can, it's a nonprofit, you can get nonprofit, taxes have to be accessible to people. Don't go into the details, that's what you do. Pro public. You can go online.
Postimo.
Postimo.
Wait, it's, I'm sorry.
So.
They pay taxes.
Yeah.
They have to file a tax form, if you're not.
You have to file a tax.
That's why I'm asking, why do they have taxes, they're not.
Well, they file.
What are they paying taxes on?
You don't necessarily, they don't necessarily pay, but you have to file it.
So they're saying they, it would have cost forty-seven thousand.
Yeah, that's what they say.
They were a for-profit.
They, oh, they said their actual expenses for twenty-twenty-two was forty-seven point three thousand.
Oh, it's not that they would have paid them in taxes, it's that that's their expense.
So what we're trying to.
He said tax, he said tax.
I know.
They said tax, I'm like, why are they paying taxes? Okay, they're, they're expense, no.
Okay, and, you know, no revenue in twenty-one, and no revenue, um, was twenty-one thousand in twenty-two. And there's been numbers anywhere from thirty-five to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We still don't have a lease contract, but I know from the meetings we've had with them, they want to, they need to bring help in to do a lot of their paperwork that's required by the state, the financial stuff. And they talked about doing an audit, it would be thousands of dollars. So I felt like giving them sixty thousand, you know, we still have to negotiate the lease agreement. You know, putting sixty thousand dollars in the budget for next year was, you know, I think a safe number.
Up from the thirty thousand.
Wow, we had fifty.
No, no, but the, last year was thirty thousand. Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen and five, I think it was. And, and the thirty thousand you're thinking of was for the capital expenses.
Oh.
That was in a separate.
So we're increasing the budget forty-five thousand dollars.
And, but we're expecting, we're expecting in return for that. And, but we're expecting, we're expecting in return for that, said, you know, better accounting and more, more service of support. The, the lease was a ridiculous amount.
They, they.
So I was okay with the fifty, I, I just don't know, given the numbers, I think.
But I, I think, what, I think sixty is, you know, based on what I see here, based on the conversations we've had with them in negotiations. It's more closer to sixty. I'm more worried about like year two and three about the transparency that we have talked about, so.
And that forty seven is all their expenses minus that fundraising?
No, it doesn't say.
Well, I guess that's what I'm saying still, like.
But you, you know, when you, you have to, you know, the legal counsel says their fundraising is their funding. You know, you can't go to them and ask them about what they're doing, but you can't, you gotta be very careful in the conversation.
Well, the question is that's skin of the game always, I mean, we're gonna end up paying for it either way, I'm just faced the question about what number, you know?
I will say that um in the letter they sent that had those higher numbers, because they were hoping, they, what they wanted was to have the capital expenditures as part of the agreement, and that's why we're not, you know. Frank and I discussed last week.
We did a select board meeting with the legal counsel last week.
So that's why those numbers were going up so precipitously year on year. Um, but in that, they also did say that they did intend to continue to do fundraising. So hopefully that's still on the table.
Well.
Even if we're not asking what they're doing with it.
Well, I think.
I was just gonna say, I think, I mean, the fire department, you know, needs the support, there's obviously a problem. I, you know, it's just incumbent on the select board to make sure they continue to manage that process, and we know where the money went, and we're not sitting here scratching our head a year later, we didn't get a lease, we didn't do this. You know, I think supporting them is the absolutely the right thing to do, but the question remains of the management administration and how to manage it. So very hopeful with under town administrator, but I just want to be on record as saying that, like, it's, the onus is now on us.
I, I agree with that.
Yep.
Transparency is very important, and also I think. Being clear, uh who's responsible for what dollars? What dollars is the town's responsibility, and what dollars is the not-for-profit's responsibility? And both in terms of expenses and also in terms of generating income. I don't know if any other not-for-profit, maybe there are, but the town of Monterey says, don't worry, we got it covered.
Whatever.
Maybe, maybe there are, maybe the library, maybe some, but you know, but I just think there should be transparency. And I agree with the esteemed chairwoman of the Fire S Committee. Did I say Steve?
Steve. I was gonna say, you're bothering me up on there.
This is out of question of the importance of having. Appropriate and sober fire coverage and fire services in the town involved out in that. These are essential services and people who do that work, um God bless, and to put their lives on the line at any moment, any day. Thank you, thank you, Paul.
Um, so. Yeah, and I think part of it is that we do, we know, even the chief knows that we need better accounting, and we're. Need to insist that part of that money goes to hiring help, whether it's a bookkeeper or an accountant. They need to audit their books, and that's, again, there's a bigger, bigger things afoot, and those numbers are gonna have to be. Ready at one point or another, we might as well start getting them in order now.
And I'm sure, while I, I'm not an accountant, I'm sure that my experience or I have these experience, if. They wanted some input, we'd be happy to provide that input.
And, and, you know, I think whether he's willing to take it perhaps, or he feels it want, he, I feel like he wants it to be independent, and I'm like, look, I don't care. You need references, we'll try and find you some, you wanna do it yourself, go for it, but you need to get the books done properly.
Right.
Right, and that, that, at the end of the day, I care about the product, we're happy to help you, if you wanna do it yourself, go ahead.
Right.
Right, but we can't.
But I still see, to see the finished product.
Because we have a.
And we can't let it go like, you know, three months and say, oh, still nothing, it has to be. So it's gonna be a lot of pressure on Roger, but we can't be in the same position a year later, no lease, estimating numbers, coming up with data at the last minute. We wanna support them, we know that they are doing incredible work, we know how dedicated they are, we know that a few people are carrying a load, but we wanna be able to have the best data possible. To share the burden and make sure we protect the town, especially this is part of the budget, it's so growing out of proportion.
And it, and the scary part is that it's not going to quit without.
It's not gonna cease.
So just, just a few numbers that I've been shooting on, so Sean, I, we asked him for a bunch of numbers, and Sean actually delivered a bunch of numbers that were really helpful. Frank. To, um Frank pulled together some, I mean, I.
I, I did this.
Okay, and I, I went through um some old annual reports and just because I thought it was indicative. In seventy eight, there were fifteen calls for the fiscal year of nineteen seventy eight.
Probably like a hundred calls here.
I think I, I believe there were.
Seventy eight, no, it's.
Yeah, I think there were seventy five or something.
Yeah.
And twenty twenty three fiscal year was a hundred and sixty six calls.
Wow.
Um, so, uh.
Seventy eight to twenty.
To twenty three.
Fifteen.
It's, and but it wasn't, it's not linear, it's not linear, right? The, the bigger part of that, like you'd have to collect a lot of it, and there were a huge number of years it wasn't being reported in the annual town report. But it kinda stayed pretty low for a long time and then shot up, and it really shot up additionally a couple, starting a couple years after.
Four, what, can you, four years?
But it, it stayed, it was low, it just stayed low for a very long time, and then it shot up, and it's staying up, and. On top of that, right, we now have the average age in Monterey is sixty five. Um, so that's telling you there appear to be volunteer firefighters, and it isn't just here, this is a nationwide phenomenon, not just aging, but the lack of volunteerism. And not just aging, but the lack of volunteerism, but aging too, it's.
Yeah, it's just really lucky, you know, that's what I would have.
Right.
Right, um, you wanna give your numbers for the?
Yeah, I, she, with the numbers that Roger got from the person.
Thank you.
I, I tracked it, which you pulled it out.
Oh, cool, thanks.
And I, what I did, I put the calendar here, and then down in the box of the, which is in the two thousand twenty three.
Do we know how many of these calls are not Monterey, or these are all only Monterey?
We don't know, but it.
It's still a call.
That's something, that's something you might need to let go.
Yeah, I mean, you, there is.
I mean, it's a complicated reason, I'm having to talk with you another time about it, but that is something you should let go.
No, I'm just curious, because of the.
It's probably findable, although the data, like, his data keeping actually is pretty extensive, but report generation is.
Yeah, no, it'll just be good data when we have the conversations about.
Yeah.
Coordination and.
So.
And who were tornadoes.
Um, what we had, what he provided was a total number of firefighters on the roster. He identified the eleven that live out of town, which puts it at forty seven percent, forty eight percent of the volunteers do not live in town. I think based on the conversations I've had, this sort of drug, not sort of, but this drive by, we look to have help there at night. Because you're called from the fire, and we've got X amount of people coming from, you know, Hughes, Tonic, Great Barrington, Santa Fe, so this allows you to have a quick response. Okay, so that's one interesting number, I don't know what that number was fifteen years ago, but it's.
Well, it wasn't, because it's only very, they literally used to not let you participate in the volunteer fire department if you weren't from Monterey.
Yeah, I, I spoke to my friends in Chickapiti, and they said that they are not a volunteer fire department, but they basically said that even if someone is living five minutes away because of dispatch. You know, that five minutes, if they're not in there another town, that is helping everyone, because the first guy that gets it, one truck can leave and then. So that whether they're sleeping from out of town or not, the quicker, and I don't know about our response plan, so that's another question, but uh, you know, it's always, it's always good practice to be close to them.
Oh.
So, yeah, so the point, one of the, we heard about the logistics on how it falls on the four managers, you know, the deputy chief, chief, the two captains. So what um. Sean provided, you know, I just, I didn't put names out there, I go, I numbered the responders, and then the number of calls they responded to. And you can see in the calendar year, there was a hundred and seventy two. Uh, responses, calls, should probably say, and you can see the deputy chief, the chief are having the higher participation in the calls, because a lot of them aren't during the day. There's one person, a logistic volunteer, has a high percentage, but they can't fight a fire, they're, you know, they're doing logistics for their equipment or.
Oxygen.
Water, oxygen, whatever. So it raised that issue, you know, that not only, you know, particularly the chief and the deputy chief. And then the two captains are doing, you know, they're also helping running the fire department and the fire company, but they were, had the higher response to everything.
And just to give you some.
So that's the total.
We're talking like more than eighty deployments a year, for one of them, it's nearly a hundred. Think about how many hours of your life that is, and how frequently your life is being disrupted.
So we're gonna uh deal with that in compensation pieces.
Yeah, that's what I, I think, I, you know, because when you talk about the compensation, I always think about how do you explain it to the public? You know, and then I think the numbers, you know, they tell a story, and, you know, we have to do that, and I, I do, you know, I talked to Sean one time in the last five or six weeks. About the number of hours he's put in finding the right fire truck, you know, you know, because it's like anything else, there's probably a thousand option, you gotta weigh them all, because you wanna get a shot at it. So they're, they're putting in the time and effort, and, you know, Susan's been working on the compensation, but.
So I, I've had several additional conversations um since our meeting on Thursday. Frank and I and the town council and Roger met um with Sean, and at the end of the day. We all know it's coming, we know that it's gonna involve other towns and trying to come up with a way to work cooperatively. The question is in what format is that gonna be, is it gonna be multiple towns agreeing to share services, sort of like leotary and, and. Well, leotary and formally stock bridge, I, I'm not sure now, based on what I just read in the Hertz or Edge, whether that's continuing. Is it gonna be that kind of arrangement, is it gonna be a fire district? It, it's unclear, there's a lot of thing, pieces involved in figuring that out, and it's made even more complicated because there's so many, frankly, egos involved. Everybody's got their little fight them, and it's hard to give up control. And all of those things have to be maneuvered carefully, there's, you know, there's not just select boards, there's also fire chiefs and the fire departments of the small towns. Who have, or fire EMS, I should say, and there's the need to really think about combining fire and EMS for a lot of good reasons, which we've talked about in here before. So what he'd like to see is that he thinks that the, the three, the chief, the deputy chief, and the captain, who's been most involved in those discussions. They'd like to take on actually trying to craft a plan in the next year, and they're willing to have a job description. Um, I'm pretty sure they're willing to work with Roger and maybe me to just keep us in the loop and make sure that we all have. As we can clarity on how that is going, and at the end, I would like to see a written document of some kind, it can't just be in Sean's head, no matter how good his head is at holding that. Um, whether, I, I don't care who drafts it, right, I'll, I'll draft it and make him sign off on it, but it has to be, there has to be some kind of project, product, even if it's not a final product, because there's still pieces playing. But I think it's important, I think we need a clear plan of how we're gonna proceed, and even if it's a tentative plan, and even if it's a plan of here's possibility A, possibility B, possibility C, and here's what it's gonna cost.
So what's the proposal for this budget?
Was that your next question, or do you have another, before we get to that?
Before we get to that. Um, one, because I'm a process thinker, one thing to think about is also some type of pilot project. So sometimes with a situation like this, it can be enticing to think of the grand solution. So we're gonna make a regional district with six other towns or what have you, and you try to get everybody together. And might have been, that might have been what was so recent with the school situation, I'm not sure, but you try to get a grand solution. And sometimes it make, it works better to have a model, and maybe we pilot it with one in the town, and that works, and then we add a third town, and then a fourth town, and it starts to work. Because you then work out the kinks in the piloting, both the strategic, operational kinks, like how do we get firefighters where they need to be, if you're on the first side of the other town. You know, and get you where you can do without it taking twenty five minutes. Uh, and, and, but also if it's about how do we manage this, how do we structure it, how do we make decisions? What happens if one town's using more equipment than the other town, you know, or all that, that's a vicious.
And I would say that Sean is completely on the same page and is working on a pilot project for those.
Right.
To, in, in this case, it would be ambulance services that are shared, but it's the, it's under the same.
And there are some towns in even large cities like San Diego.
No, it won't involve money, it will just.
I'm joking, but I can, yeah.
There are some large cities like San Diego and others where the EMS and fire are in the same.
Already joined.
Joint.
Most places. And.
Or a division.
Being lead by both.
And the fire, the fire department rolls if it's in the MS court.
And, and lead, the way it's working is the, the full-time, the, the full-time E N T, they're actually paramedics or firefighter paramedics. So they're rolling the role and calling in the rest of the people.
So interesting enough, when you said pilot project, I thought you meant for the compensation. For short-term plan.
No, I mean.
But that was a good idea.
It gives it this idea of.
I got it, I'm just saying. So what, what's the proposal?
Okay, hang on, I'm just taking it down a little bit.
I just also want to note, just to you know, that the national average for false alarms is thirty eight percent. We're doing pretty damn good.
I didn't know that, that's interesting.
According to the fire safety. The fire safety matters, fire safety matters, this looks like a very radical mark there, especially post-pandemic. Because I was thinking, you know, like, I always look at things operationally too, so I was thinking of these calls, you know, what's the largest percent? Oh, false alarms is their way to get that down, but that number is pretty good, so it's not an education.
It's a reach.
Well, I, we. If someone has an alarm, they get charged.
The, for having on, I think if they have multiples, yes, but I think there's not, I don't remember.
No, you do, you get charged.
There was some conversation.
I know, because I was at my friend Kathy's house, and she burnt something, and the fire alarm went off, and she's like, oh damn, now I owe seventy five dollars.
Like, whatever it is, it's not covered, that's impossible.
Yes, so they, right, they, they definitely get charged. If, if, if you have the alarm that is, so not a false alarm call, but if you have that alarm that's hardwired and goes right to them, then yes, you're absolutely charged for it.
Um, so.
Anybody else understand?
And then, so here's my, here's what I'm thinking, that we should, and I struggle with this, and, but I'm throwing it out there. I think if we're gonna actually expect the number of hours that kind of plan is gonna require. I'm thinking we, I'm proposing fifty to five, broken out twenty K for the chief, fifteen for the assistant chief. Ten for the captain and seventy five hundred dollars for the other captain, which would represent mostly recognition of his um extensive deployment.
Did you talk to Sean about those numbers, he was okay?
Um, I talked to him about, yes, well, I talked to him about the twenty and the fifteen. For he and the deputy, and I was less, I said I wasn't really sure what was gonna happen with the other two. So I've been wrestling with it.
Continue on job descriptions and.
Yes.
And um, what's the word?
For the three who would.
T M Rs, have you heard of these?
What is T M R?
Tangible measurable results.
Good lord. I gotta write that down. Who, who actually uses that? I like it, but.
In the private sector.
I'm in the, you know, yeah. Put it on the boardroom, what's your T M R?
Better than your K P I.
Yes.
T M Rs, everybody's K P I's.
What, now we're changed to what, are you suggesting?
Uh, so, and then there, there was one other piece that we would have to discuss with whether it just goes. Uh, so, and then there, there was one other piece that we would have to discuss with whether it just goes into, you know, so it's line, what? It's two-twenty compensation.
My only concern about this, and I understand we've looked at it five ways till Sunday and I understand the time and effort put in, I understand, and, and, you know, I always have concerns because now they're going on payroll, about doing another job, hours tracking, because that's our financial responsibility. But my only other.
It's sensitive to stipend, I don't think there would be hours, but go ahead.
I think we never get.
We'll, we'll get, we'll come back to that.
So that's my first, because with the stipend, that's something different. But my real concern is given, this is a huge jump and a huge commitment. And is that, is that gonna be baseline? Like, are we gonna wait to see the data? I mean, is this now, I understand we're in a little bit of crisis mode, all these guys left.
Fire department.
Fire company, perfect timing to remind us. Oh my god, it's going up to my head. But you, you understand what I'm saying, like.
I do, I don't think we should say we're not paying you till we get the product.
Not, not what I'm saying.
Maybe do that with a consult.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying we're, yeah, you can. Uh, we're, we're saying that, you know, with times, all those things, I already said that thing coming on select boards to manage that. But what I'm saying is, is this a new standard or just a crisis measure for this year? Because I'm really, I, I know we don't have to discuss it now, but I think, right, what happens? All of a sudden, you know, it's like the town repopulates and went back to seventy-eight volunteers like we weren't seventy-eight. You know, I, I'm just saying, like, if, you know, if the situation gets better, if we do.
And then move Christmas to June, but that's a great idea.
I, I, I'm not saying we have to answer that, I just.
I have to break it to you that I think the direction that the entire nation is going and certainly this region is going is to pay forces.
And, right.
And there, there are a lot of reasons for it. One would be consider.
I'm just saying, this is a huge jump from zero, you know, it's like zero to sixty.
But realistically, is it better to jump the, to the, you know.
Well, and here's the other question, do we know if the other town?
I know that Otis is going from three full-time ambulance EMTs, they're putting four on the warrant. Because it's been running, uh, weekdays, pardon? I don't know the rate of pay, but that's a bit, but we're talking to compensation line. They're, they're paying three full-time EMTs and they're going to four full-time EMTs because they wanna go from daytime staff to twenty-four-seven staff. If you don't think that's a significant change, you're not seeing the pattern.
I do, but I don't know what rate they're paying at.
I don't know.
So that's a significant.
You're missing what I'm saying.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying, there's two pieces.
Think what we're transiting toward is a full-time paid department that's gonna be fire EMS. I don't know how it's gonna look, I don't know how we're gonna get there, I don't know who else is gonna be in there with us because I hope to God it's not just us.
And, and that's the only question I'm asking, are we pricing ourselves way out of the market by going this far out already?
I do.
No, I don't think we are.
I'm just raising the question, but I don't have to that.
I, I mean, part we don't know, you know, we don't know what we don't know at this point because there's not a laid-out plan. We know that we're at like a crisis with health and other things in emergency service. And, you know, if you don't, you know, it, it's hard to estimate. It's, what are you willing to invest in public, public safety?
Yeah, and, I mean, not, not for this budget, but I still think we should do a special assessment for fire, hundred twenty-five dollars to have. Raise a hundred and fifty thousand.
I, I have another.
But that's for the future.
And I'm gonna give you one more number, which is the full-time department in lead is running close to a million dollars.
So this two thirty-one.
Mostly staffing, we're not talking about the cost of truck.
So this two thirty-one that we're now looking at encompasses all of that.
Would be two eighty-four, one ten.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I wanna know how well the numbers on the fire lines change, depending on what we're talking about. But before that, before that. What confuses me as a resident is when we have certain services on the budget that, and, and, and in a sense payroll or compensation, it's not called payroll. But we're paying compensation to people who are not employees of the town.
Technically, they are. People talking about the fire department, the fire department, part town employees, yes. We're not paying the fire company, we're paying individuals as part of the fire department. It is complicated.
And that they follow, but that they then are town employees following town policies and procedures. And they report then through their chain of command up to the town administrator.
Correct.
And, but just like police, the chief reports to the town administrator. Okay.
That's why I say it's incumbent on the select board and the town administrator to manage this, exactly.
Right, so.
Where that comes from.
So then they're like consultants. They're not, they're kinda like, but not like.
Not really.
But that pays for pay, pays for play payers.
We pay them for necessarily. Or paying them, their check is written by.
The check is written by us.
To, to this individual firefighter.
Same payroll, same payroll system all the other.
Yeah, but in a fire company, nobody gets any money through the fire company, there's no payroll.
This budget, when we say compensation, this is the money that we are paying directly to the firefighters.
Correct. The fire department fires.
You can see that on the tab that says fire department compensation rate. So Susan, I would suggest.
That's why it says fire department.
Well, may, we're gonna rework on the budget spreadsheet, but I would suggest we add a new line that says.
That was the next question.
Yeah.
Are we keeping, are we keeping those two things separate? Are we doing fire compensation that's just fire deployment and doing the stipends as a separate line?
I would say for our budgeting purposes, it should be in the budget workshop as a line, but for public purposes, it should be one line, public.
So it is, right, so on the, on the warrant, then it would appear as compensation is two eighty-four, one ten.
That's what I would do, yeah.
The fire hall lease is sixty even. Um, I did actually put it in separately on the fire department page.
So I don't have that later, right, pardon?
The other stays at fifty and six and they, the equipment maintenance stays sixty-six.
Yes, the other numbers is the same, it's just those two numbers that changed. And just to use.
Well, no, in the six and the fifty, apply and try to do that.
The two numbers that changed, the compensation number and the fire hall lease number. Um, and just for clarity.
Sixty thousand.
That brings the percent change, which number?
And what's the number? Two eight four.
One one zero. Can I ask a really, a really basic, perhaps stupid question?
Go for it.
This is the only budget I've ever seen where the line items, there are multiple line items with the same number.
It's so weird.
Because it's, uh, because that two-twenty is part of the accounting system.
Yeah.
But can't the accountant do two-twenty dash oh one, two-twenty dash two?
They do in fact, we're just not putting it on there.
I'm not certain if those are, because it makes it very hard to refer.
Two eighty-four, one one oh.
Because I, I think.
So Susan, the new number?
I think the two twenties are, again, those are all part of the accounting system and it's just.
But they.
We'll focus on that next year.
We should focus on that next year. There are sub-accounts and we probably could, but there was resistance to doing it, so it hasn't been done. I applaud your idea of putting something in there that makes it more easy to reference.
Maybe that's something the town administrator could.
Four three five, one six seven, where are we?
You've available.
Four three five, well, so what's the, my new total changing to two eight four.
Which new total, the total?
To, total budget request is four three five, one six seven. Two eight four, three six, six eight.
Wait, what line, are you on the budget?
The total budget, the total new budget is five million, four hundred and thirty-six seven.
That's our budget if I'm at the fire department.
The fire department total.
After we make those changes, I have four three five, one six seven.
I gotta go back to fire.
I can't.
Four two five, one six seven, yes, that's correct.
Six point seven one percent overall. Total, total.
Right now I gotta go back to the other thing. On the bottom of the draft budget, percent over six point seven one percent, yeah, so that was the other.
Yeah, okay, so mine isn't totally connected, but I'm up there. I just wanna make sure we're talking about the same number.
Yes, I just didn't understand what number you were trying to get.
We're on the fire department, I'm trying to move forward.
But I wasn't on the fire department.
I'm not sure if I did, but I went through and checked all the.
Oh, I did too, and I, and I previously sent it to you after I picked, went through the links, but I don't mind that we both tried to mix that.
I, I went back to an old one and just went through and I figured I'd go through to see what changed to. What it all references and what.
Right, but I did that with the revenue and I can't come back up to the number, so it's not gonna work. So I hope, you know, I don't know what to say.
I don't touch the revenue.
Well, that's why I looked at it to make sure we have the right number. My concern, so.
The revenue job?
The revenue is the.
They give them up for me. It's the assessor, the town clerk and the accountant.
Right, but there are several places in the budget where there are different numbers. And so I just think we need to make sure we.
It matters when it feeds into the.
That's what I'm saying, so Roger, maybe you and I can check that out tomorrow?
I don't know if tomorrow's gonna work, but I can, I can, I know that there's one tab in there.
I don't know, where does revenue?
I don't touch that stuff, it's.
Revenue doesn't actually show on, on the.
It does.
It's on the far left, so it tabs on the far left.
On the draft, yes, we're not on the draft budget.
Nothing on the.
On the draft budget page with the, that we make the warrant from.
It does not show.
Right, but there are several revenue tabs.
Yeah, there's that, revenue estimating.
Yes, but there's several tabs.
And, right.
I think one of those is not a real tag.
Right, and that's where I can't tie the number that, that, that by, it's different several places.
All right, so we'll deal with that later, I think, we have to get to warrant.
All right, let's do it.
I'm just trying, I don't know the numbers.
Okay, so is. And it, it makes me crazy, but I don't know what else to do.
So the finance committee, we're, Jeff, are we okay? We're good with those two changes. Okay, so that's the new number.
What was that? Two five. No, no, he just said something. Oh, no!
You need to hire a computer guy.
Oh, we have that right here, computer guy. When you're ready, I have one.
Let's just make sure we're finished with this, but I. Okay, so are.
Are you forgetting, Jeff?
Everything's.
So do we wanna vote on whether we make these changes?
Well, we just, the finance committee just said.
I, you guys just did, they're okay with it, I'm okay.
Okay, make a motion.
Obviously, I suggested it.
So you're making a motion that we, we take the two different changes.
I make a motion, we change those two budget lines as previously described, yes.
I second the motion.
And thank you for the extra work and.
And thank you to the fire department for all the extra work.
Yeah, no, this is the way it is, thank you.
Everybody's, yeah, everybody's doing the work, this is.
I'm waiting for the truck to come back.
I'm gonna vote yes.
I need a ride.
I'm just gonna vote yes, are you voting?
No, no, I gotta vote on compensation.
Okay.
Immediate family and myself.
Right, and the lease?
No.
Okay.
So in the warrant that goes as two oh, two oh, make sure.
It's in the operating budget.
It's in the operating budget, so it doesn't really care.
He can vote on the fire.
Right, right, right.
We can certainly stand up and talk about it if something.
Right, 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 okay.
Okay.
Did the finance committee get a chance to look at the, the, the pre?
She has.
Yes, I think it's excellent, well done. I might only add one thing, in the places where you talked about replacing a truck, I might add to feel we get that question and the other truck will be sold for auction and applied for whatever.
It does say in the warrant article will be traded in or sold at auction.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought, I didn't see it.
It's in the warrant, it's in the letter, to the warrant, not in the letter.
It's in the warrant, the wording on the letter is different than the font.
Right, I, I might just insert that in here because we, oh, we get that question.
Fair enough, oh, by the way, we also.
Or maybe it's the question we want, so don't worry, we can handle that one.
And it wasn't on this copy, but we did also put a sentence right up in that first part of the statement
Where you can run their, please read the warrant.
To go to the fire, for the fire.
To go to the.
Finance committee briefing.
Okay, good. And then, um, once I can tie these revenue numbers, I'll have the handout.
Oh, you're.
Start it, go on page.
I know, but can you handle this, okay?
Thursday or Friday.
Me too.
So do you think we should promote the flower truck, the highway, the highway one truck and the fire tanker engine? Say the proposal includes, uh, selling or trading in the old one?
I really don't.
I don't think.
I don't think.
I, I don't think.
I just thought you were gonna say that.
Because it's, it's right on the warrant article and if they're too dumb to read the warrant article, we'll be voting on it, I don't know what to do.
Why don't we poll, why don't we poll the public, why don't we poll the public?
And this gentleman, I do not know, hold on a gentleman.
The voting public.
Why, I'm just saying.
Does it need to be in here on every single mention of a vehicle?
Because I read the whole thing. But you read, but you're making, the bad Mickey.
Yeah, but I can be a representative.
She's not a representative, she comes to every meeting.
Mickey did not pay cash for his compensation, he gave me a check.
Oh, but you do have checks, just not email.
I think checks are the old school.
The checks are the old.
Checks are old school, she, I bet she's not paying with Venmo.
No Venmo?
Is it Venmo?
Now I'm into a square today. Oh my god. Okay, okay, good.
Did we just finalize the budget? Oh my god.
I probably just making sure that the revenue numbers are right and I don't know how to do that. I think we did just finalize all these ones, I think that was the last outstanding one. And it's, it's only those that appear on the warrant, so. Well, well done, okay.
So we have the six point seven one percent, that's the final.
Six, I'm counting six six point seven.
Last year and this year?
Uh, that, that.
Plus about a percent from what we, what, what we took this year.
So you're doing that on budget for a hundred percent, right?
For fifty-six thousand that we, that we used this year to up the, the transfer station itself. When it, what we taxed last year was five million and thirty-seven thousand. What we're gonna tax this year is five million and four hundred and thirty-six thousand.
Let me make sure, so on the revenue, so we're gonna tax.
So that percent is.
Five million, that's the number I can't tie to. But I have five million, it looks like five ninety-one.
Four hundred and thirty-six thousand and four hundred.
Four hundred thirty.
Naturally taxed last year.
Right, and just because this was free cash, it got added.
Why, like tax levy.
So, but realistically, we actually used some of.
What, which term you?
So we aren't late.
I don't wanna get into it.
No, we do.
It's just a can of worms that we talked about every week.
Total operating expenses on the draft budget. The total operating expenses line is on one forty-six on itself.
Okay, total operating expenses. But really, then I'll enter those in the revenue chart.
But when you get your tax bill, that's what you got your tax bill on last year, that's what you're getting on this year.
Right.
That wasn't in your tax bill.
But that's what we, some of those two is what we actually spent though.
Yeah, but it wasn't in your tax bill.
Right, but the.
So it looks, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Right, and the, the percentage increase is six point seven one, but the, something else is different.
So it's six point seven one percent of what we actually spent. As opposed to what, what we taxed last.
Which is pretty amazing, you know what I mean?
Is it good or bad amazing?
I think, I think we, I think we pretty much said yes to everything that came our way this year. I mean, I, I do.
You didn't have to say no to the parks commission?
We got the, I voted, the beach monitor there, I was, I'm saying, we pretty, well, after we had to do that, we pretty much, with the fire department we showed off, the Southern Berkshire, the, you know.
The cola.
The cola, the, um, the, uh, new real estate stuff, Marni, you know, the new, we pretty much really, really, we asked people to be thoughtful about what they needed to do their job right. A lot of them came in with increases and we really honored that. So I, I think that's very impressive. I don't know how people feel about it when they're paying for it, but yeah.
Yeah.
Nothing else to make me nervous.
I just wanna say, I think our taxes are reasonable and I'm, you know, I mean, I know what the average house is and I don't have the average house. I'm well aware of that and I, you know, I see an increase, but I know the reasons for it, I hope other people see that.
I do too. I mean, I think we're pretty transparent and people expect services, you gotta pay for them at the end of the day.
Don Corson always tells me, oh, how is it five thousand dollar increase on the budget is one, just one cent on your, on your taxes? So when you figure like something goes up fifty thousand dollars, it's only ten cents.
And some things we have very, we have very little control over. We have control over the education and piece of it. I mean, that's a number, it's a different cost, which is a huge percentage of the budget. And how's, and the little services went up, you know, and we're not gonna say no, we're not gonna have expenses. So unless we have a different plan.
We better not, a lot of golf.
So I'm just saying, but some of the costs, the, the increased costs are costs that are passed on to us that we don't have a lot of choice about.
Well, right, you know, just, just to remind you, Frank might remember from last year, and I haven't done them yet, but what we do to explain it to the public, the way we've done that is exactly that. We do a chart on the revenue to show how really is very stable, you know, and the sources, that's what that chart is. And a lot of those were held flat. Then we do a chart on the non-discretionary costs, so education, you know, the health and safety, all of those. the health and safety, all of those, let's put it that way, deep model. You know, as an example. So that, I think, is also very stable if you look at it, um, you know, year over year. And then we did a chart on operating budget on the whole fi- you know, the whole thing, to show, and I broke it up, uh, more, um, you know, some of the functional, some of the larger, like education, public works, general government protection, so they can understand the percent, you know, when you get your credit statement. And then we did one with, um, operating budget proposed. And then what was budgeted last year, so they could differentiate, and then we did labor costs. So I think that was really interesting to show, you know, how we're doing on the labor costs and how really stable we really, really have been, you know, and where the bulk of our money is spent, and then we just do a listing on the capital.
So this year, will you do a three-year?
No, I will not.
You won't just add the new year, you'll just do twenty-four, twenty-five as.
No, for the historical revenue, I'll keep it from even nineteen and I'll add twenty-five. For the non-discretionary budget, we did it based last year, we did three years, so I'll do the same three years. For, um, the operating budget, we just did the prior year, so that's, okay.
Cause I was, yeah, I was just thinking one option is just to add twenty-five to everything that you've cut.
Well, but then it's three pie charts, because, um, Michelle pointed out last year, she remember Frank's prior financial year. It's not gonna be big enough for all the people over sixty-five right now, right, so that's why, so we just did one for a fair.
And I, I think too.
And I, we can both be old ones.
You might have to do, instead of doing pie chart with that, pick one thing and show how it's changed over three years by doing like a bar graph or something.
But that's a good idea.
A period of time, but just pick one category where you think it's notable.
Yeah, so. Yeah.
Because I, I agree, like, if you give them forty-two pie charts, they're gonna get, they're gonna want to decide.
Yeah. Yeah, so once it's locked in, you guys sent me the final spreadsheet with all the numbers, I'll play with it. I'll send you charts. I don't think that is deliberation, because it's a visual presentation of something that was already voted on, so, you know, so I'll send.
It's not deliberation, you're just telling us what you're planning, and that, you're reporting to us.
Right, and just. Right, exactly, that's what I'm saying. So I'll do that, and then, um, you know, we'll make a public bookroom on the website and everybody, but Jeff will be there. And tell him about Sean, if he wants a chance to talk to the public.
We can, he's away right now, so.
Someone can reach out to Sean. Okay. Okay, so, but I think so that, that is exactly how we help people. And then I will do, you know, I do do a big chart on taking out education, so people really understand, who really am I dealing with, three million dollars, that, that's a big.
Right, that's important.
So when you look at the fire department, after taking out one point eight for the education as a five point eight budget, they're very big time.
Okay, do we have to sign the warrant now?
Yeah, um, we have to vote on the, we, we should vote on the warrant, um, so.
Vote to finalize the annual town meeting warrant as amended today.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? We'll call a vote, Susan?
Yes.
Frank?
Yeah.
And Justin, yes. So that carries, and then, and then the letter, we'll just get everyone to sign off on, on a copy of the letter.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yep. And I think I'm going to shoot out in a second.
Seven fifteen, wow. Forty-five minutes?
Should, we have other agenda.
Correct.
Yeah, I know.
Four minutes.
Oh, well.
Well, there's also time management.
Yeah, um.
And me begging for us to please hire an office assistant, so we can. Twenty, twenty-four minutes.
I haven't started today.
What?
I'm collecting some right now, so I was gonna send you.
Um, and just one other suggestion, because we'll meet at the budget meeting on the twen- on the twenty-fifth, and then, you know, so I think, uh, you know, last year, and I don't think this is necessary, this year, we did a debriefing of what didn't happen, what did, what went wrong. But I think what, you know, I know, um, you know, listening to Jeff and I get elected again as a new person, that we really would like to be helpful to you and really looking at what strategically you want us to do next year. Like the budget worksheet, what can we be helpful management, like, we know we have to go into the debt service, so that, um, you know, I'm just saying, think about that and how we.
Just so you know, Roger and I are gonna be following up on the items that Melissa and I were working on.
I was gonna say the dashboard.
The dashboard and also tracking the changes during this process, because one thing that's very hard is to be, is to track, you know, on November first, we said this, on November fifteenth, we said this, on this line and that, on that line, and the numbers go up and down. And when you look at it today, for the final vote, if you had a question of what did we say like in December? That you can't like, it's very hard to track it as opposed to just tracking how these, the line items change, or the ones that do change, change over time. So Roger and I are just.
Yeah.
Well, I would be surprised, cause I just went through the budget, um, to kind of rectify changes of the last couple months. I'm surprised, and if you think about it, there really aren't, especially in February, March and April, that many changes to the budget. We began talking about a few lines in depth. Um, I think at a certain point, maybe we could have a cutoff of like January fifteenth, where changes from then on are tracked. The changes that are happening in December, they're very preliminary. Um, I just feel like it'd be a lot more manageable if we start tracking in.
That's fine, but so like on a night like tonight, we can go back and say, wait a second, you know, if this is what that number was and here's why it went up. We can say as of a certain, like the draft budget begins on January fifteenth, let's speak, and everything else was preliminary to the draft budget, and then we wanna track the changes.
Six thirty, I sent it to you, I didn't.
Oh, I don't know.
I'm putting it on, I can put it on my calendar.
I sent it where I did it, sent it right.
How to best do that, but how to kill a job.
So you're serving dinner.
Yeah.
I don't know, what can I do? I can't talk to you, I need a wife.
So, will you both be at some point tomorrow to sign the letter, the cover letter?
Yeah, what time work for you, around?
Well, that would just be a matter of you dropping in.
Well, I'm just saying, I, Roger might not have it till one o'clock, or, you know, we say he has a busy day tomorrow.
Yeah.
I just ask Roger when. I just mean because we wanna get it off the quick.
Thank you for, thank you for having us on.
I might be able to come in at one, but what I can do is I can put the changes, so we'll just, just have it set out.
Right.
Yeah, cause I'm happy birthday.
I just wanna say that on, uh, January thirtieth, I received this budget, which said that the total operating expenses were gonna be five million, four hundred and eighty thousand, ninety-two dollars and forty-five cents. So we actually went down since January thirtieth.
Well, that's good to know. I'm glad you understood that, Michael.
Well, I don't know how we did that, because we, yes.
What did we thought?
We changed how we paid, and we changed how we paid, right.
Oh, I don't remember, a whole bunch, a bunch of stuff. Yeah, but there, there, we changed how we paid, but also there were other changes, like the IT number came down.
Yes, pointing back.
There were a bunch of other numbers that came down like a couple ten thousand dollars.
Which, you know, I mean, not to togo on the warrant everywhere, but it's a real proof, proof positive that zero-based budget is working. Because even digging into the fire department budget, not to go overboard, what do you really need? And that's part of the reason that a lot of the changes were made, because structurally, they were old.
Thank you for that, Mickey.
That was an actual.
I know we work out.
One, one.
I can teach her.
One thing for future meeting of the, uh, um, the finance committee, so you're here. It's not, it's gonna start, it's not on your, uh, agenda to vote on, but that's a transfer request for the, um, overtime.
A transfer request?
You're gonna ask us if you have any questions.
Okay, do you know about the cover sheet? Do you have it? Do I need to be sent it to you?
Well, Eileen, I filled that out. Do you have any questions?
I, I'll have to go find the cover sheet.
No, but the, the deficit spending, what's a winter overtime for?
For highway.
Ice, snow and ice.
Okay, it just doesn't say snow, ice.
No, it's not, cause it's winter overtime, which is now we can find them.
Oh, we can find them. Yeah, no, we have no questions, but we have a tracking sheet.
Yep.
So we should, but we should sign it happy, promise to have it.
Oh, I made changes.
Oh, now the agenda, so we need a meeting.
So absolutely, do you want me to hold on to it or you wanna take it?
So next week, I need to scan then.
I'll, I'll leave the, the.
But Jeff, so Jeff, we can have a meeting if it's forty-eight hours on Friday, if we can swing it. You're leaving?
This Friday.
This Friday. Get to do our minutes and our.
You guys, you're on the hallway, so.
All right.
I can, oh, you're done, we're done?
They're kicking us out.
You're had it?
Legend working.
We're done?
Motion to adjourn the finance committee.
Absolutely agree.
Bye, y'all.
Motion to adjourn.
You need to vote, Jeff.
Oh.
I mean, this, this is the record, fifteen minutes.
Well, the other meetings last night, so I did.
We do.
You guys have, uh, a better time than most of the meetings.
I don't know, the first one tonight.
Now, where are you?
For sure, artists.
But you, are you kidding?
Just a few years ago.
All right.
The finance committee takes full credit for the laughter.
Thank you.
We're letting go of that, we're going home.
Yeah, that's a job. See you.
No, I'll be away, just saying, we're just.
You may have trouble finding.
She's on her way by herself.
She's got it all by herself.
No, I got Roger coming, Susan, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What am I serving?
Okay, so we are, so Roger, let's just follow up on the warrant. So in the cover letter, you have the changes, the cover letter, I believe, and I just sent a final version of the warrant to everybody.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
You made those changes.
I made those changes. Um, I also sent a final version of the budget, like for anything, if you notice that we're missing thirty-five thousand dollars.
Or a penny here and there.
If we're missing a penny, that's a next year problem.
No, you gotta hit the end.
So, um, my, my question has to be, and maybe we'll, yeah, can do this offline with one of you, is the whole printing process.
Yeah.
Is what did we do in the past?
Well, I can go over.
Yeah, that would be great.
So, let's just talk about it right now, this is clear.
Yeah.
So, at the bottom of the warrant, there are the places that it goes listed. There, it actually changed this year to include the library in the community center and rather than the general store, which isn't open. So, the first three are the legal places required by the bylaws, the next four are just optional additional places.
And this is just where they need to be.
Posted.
Posted.
And we'll put, I don't know if it's required by law, but we'll put wedding signature copies at those places.
Okay.
Not printer copies.
Yes, yeah.
So, what we've traditionally done is print out seven copies, we added a place this year, so I actually print out eight. Will wedding, eight copies, the board will, and then they'll go to those seven places and you'll take the eighth copy and bring it to Quick Print in Barrington, which I, I've actually done before, I did it once for Melissa.
Okay. Yep.
Um, and you go to Quick Print, you get, and Chris should be able to do this, cause I think he's done it before, you get from Chris the labels.
Right.
And you just go to Quick Print with the, with that eighth copy of the warrant and with the labels, and then you know what to do.
Cause the only thing I need to find is, I wonder if they have our, uh, one issue, because there's actually a page that goes over it that has the, um, the, uh, the mailing.
Yeah, the return.
It depends on the size of the warrant.
I know, there's, there's, there's no, normally, there's a, a mailing account, some, you know, we have, it's what that little sticker is on the top.
Well, if Quick Print does this for a lot of towns, so if you go.
Okay, I'll, I'll call them.
If you go and just talk to them.
Yeah.
This, last thing, I have limited hours, it's like ten to two.
The Quick Print?
Quick Print, yeah.
Okay, I'll go with you.
I just know that before, we had a very small warrant, and it actually changed something, and I forget what it was, like maybe they had to put it in an envelope or fold it differently.
It was right now, because right now.
Is it STM or something?
Cause, cause right now it's folded, I think it's folded and it gets mailed every.
Yes, it will always get folded. Um, I would just.
But, but I'll call them.
Talk to them. Did Chris give you a list already, I can?
He has, and we actually spoke about it this morning.
Okay, so you have the labels.
I don't have the labels yet, he's gonna give me, he's gonna give me the spreadsheet, I think he's just, I think he's just spits out a spreadsheet.
Talk to Quick Print.
I'll ask him.
I think that Ford used to spit out labels, because Apple labels, I thought, but talk to Quick Print, because I don't know about for this, but like when I ran for office, um, I actually got fold labels.
Yeah, I, I.
But maybe it is a list, because Quick Print might print them on there.
Well, they, they might print them right on.
They might print them.
There's one hiccup.
I'll, I'll definitely call.
Chris may know this or not, or may not know this, and I think we've done it different ways. We're only required to, and we only want to send it to each household.
Right.
So if there's four voters or two voters in a household, or any number one, one, we just wanna send one. If there's a computer glitch and we accidentally send two to a household, that's fine, but if we know that there's seven hundred mailing labels, we're looking for more like two or three hundred. Not seven hundred. Seven hundred would be sending it to each voter.
Yeah.
So we're looking, I forget the number, but it's probably around two or three hundred.
Cause I know there's six or seven hundred households, but they don't all get it.
Well, not everyone's a voter, so some people just are not a voter by choice, or people are not a resident.
Right, cause it, cause it only goes to voters.
It only goes to voter households.
What a voter has. And, um, um, do we want the letter to be part of this, or is that sent totally, so it's not stapled right in there?
The letter will be part of it, so it should be legal, I'm hoping it fits back, front and back on a legal.
On, oh, on legal? Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll try it, but it prob- it probably will, cause it's, it's, it's only, it's only four pages because, because of the notes here.
Yeah, it, it, I cut it, it should fit, it should fit on to.
Yeah, you could, it'll, it'll probably fit, oh, yeah, yeah.
I would, what I would do though, is I wouldn't.
Get it down to one front and back.
I wouldn't, um, like, mix the two documents.
Yep.
So the warrant is its own separate entity, so if it ends up being front and back and half a page.
Yep.
It's front and back half a page.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's stinks.
I'll, I'll, I'll try.
Maybe we do an eight-point bump.
I know.
Maybe the margin smaller or something.
We put all those signatures.
It said with a nine.
And like, the small number, you can ditch that, so.
Yeah, like, I'll, I'll, I, I, I'm looking at.
Give us that on one page three after that.
I'm pretty certain it'll go on one, one sheet of paper.
So, and then will tomorrow, at various points, come in, and we need to get six signatures, who's? For the cover letter, there's six there, for the warrant, there's only three. Then, once you get all those signatures, one will go to Quick Print, that's kind of the most important one. Um, that will check with Quick Print and.
So we're actually getting five, do I have to sign it through?
Eight.
No.
You're signing a cover letter.
So, so yes, the six, yeah, yeah.
Um. Once they're all signed, call Julio, and it's Julio's job to go and post them.
Oh, yes, I met Julio the other day.
Yeah, so Julio has to bring them to those.
To those.
Locations at Center of Kansas. Right, Mickey?
I think so, yeah, he's the constant.
Um, and one thing, just to make sure that Julio does, I already printed the date, the sixteenth of April, on the warrant, but I don't know what day he's going to post it, so a true co, under a true copy of test, there's a blank space, so whatever day he posts it, you should, here, you should pen in the nineteenth day of April or the twentieth day.
Whatever the day.
Oh, I get you.
Whatever the, so as soon as you get all the signatures on those real copies, Julio can go and post them, and then the Quick Print can happen, hopefully, I would hope Quick Print happens by Friday, the latest.
This Friday?
Yeah.
The sooner we get it out, the longer it will happen.
And we just don't know what mail.
It's a lot of reading too.
Yeah.
For those who are actually reading before you're sitting.
I didn't, I read, I didn't read the whole recall thing, because I didn't have time for that, or, I think, after that.
Um, okay, does that answer?
Yes, it does, yep, yep.
And you, so changing topics to the next one, wait, did I understand you guys to be saying that you have advertised and you're actually getting applications?
For?
The offices?
No, 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 I am, uh, um, Aline said she would help me put together a job description.
Okay.
So I have collected a bunch of job descriptions, not only, I think, hour or two for the select board in the office, but I've grabbed a bunch of others from around, and I'm reaching out, hopefully tomorrow, to, um, Mary at the Collins Center, to see if they have, just, they have something they can help with.
Okay.
And I think we need to just put that all together and see if anyone can do what she needs to do, go from there.
Great, okay.
Yeah, that would be very helpful, um.
I really hate writing, man.
I don't mind anything, I hate writing.
Um, so, what else do we have to deal with? We, we did the MOU, for the person who thinks they may have a conflict of interest, we're just gonna send them to the State Ethics Commission.
Alright.
Yeah, the State Ethics Commission is much well-equipped to handle those questions. Minutes?
Yeah.
Minutes?
We just have that, we just have the one.
Did you figure out how to do the merge thing?
I did, yeah, I think, I think moving forward, what might be best is, um, to, um, who's ever responsible for writing the original minutes?
Yeah.
If they could just send me that, and I would send like to the other two people, the minutes, and then you can write whatever you want to write or change, and then send those to me. Because that's what I figured it happened, so you, what it does is, it's kind of cool, actually. So what happens is this thing, it's this thing under review called compare, and you, um, you select the base document.
Yeah.
And then the documents that you want to bring in compared to that.
Very.
And then it sort of mixes up, and then it kind of, you bring in the next ones and put them all together, and that's, I think, how it would be done.
Well, that's not a bad way, but it's a sent, you get essentially the same thing, if every, if track changes, it's just clicked on when you're editing.
Yes, it has to happen, because sometimes I don't know that, because sometimes I get like.
Oh, I have track, the problem is if, let's say, all three of us, like, so one of us writes the minutes.
Yeah.
Or we used to be somebody else, or.
Yeah.
And send.
Well, I, I.
We all made changes and send them back to him. It, what used to happen was that Melissa would take the, the three different edits and put them into one document, so we could see them all together.
Yeah.
And I don't think track changes alone won't do that, you still have to combine your track changes and my track.
Yeah, there's like a merge.
Because what's happening too sometimes is that the track changes isn't catching, it's not set up right, so it's not catching everybody's change in that one document.
So it's combined, right?
Yeah.
Pair combined.
Yeah, you, you can, you know, you combine them all together, so you, you take one, bring in another one, and then you make a document, and you bring another document into that one. It's a little bit of a step.
I'm also not foreseeing the fall goes well, the select board members writing minutes is like a super short-term solution.
Yes, please.
Um, so, we're doing three, we're doing three twelve.
Goodnight, all.
Goodnight.
Thank you.
You always leave for the minutes.
Can you imagine why?
Maybe she should do it, maybe we should assign her something.
You're here, you take notes on our meetings?
I do, I can go back at them and look at.
Sorry, minutes?
I'm not doing minutes, no. No.
She's doing notes.
We should have for a few years.
We could really use it.
She's doing, she's doing notes, not minutes.
I can take notes and watch it over here, but.
I, I don't know what.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.
These are mine, I guess.
Yeah, like, you can't really tell whose color is blue.
It looks like, blue is me.
Justin's red.
I think, Justin's red, and then there's an orange that's in there too.
So.
But I think Justin is orange.
No, I'm red.
You're red, who's orange?
I think that might be, sometimes it's like if two people need it.
Uh, okay.
So I think in this instance, what's actually gonna be easiest right now, by the way, is I've been posting the minutes that have been approved.
Uh-huh.
I'm down to one set of minutes that I need to post, why don't I also go ahead and do this? So I just need a copy with all the changes that I made tonight.
Okay.
I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna need the documents from this meeting, I hope I have them all.
I never knew what to do, because.
I'm not gonna have them all. Um, well, I'll do what I can. Um, so, let's just go through them, I'll have a copy, I'll post these.
And then you have to make sure it's the correct draft budget and the correct draft town meeting.
But that's super easy.
Because.
Because.
They all found it?
You just go to your emails and receive your send, and then you got that day, or the day before.
On that day, right, okay.
I, I thought the same thing, and then I was.
I was like, oh my god, show me.
If you just go to that day, and.
Yeah.
And like, if it's not exactly the one that you saw at the meeting, who's gonna?
Even we didn't know, so.
Even we didn't see thirty-five thousand dollars.
Right, okay, so you're, does that mean you're gonna keep track of anything else we change?
I'm doing. Yep.
And it'll be, you know, the ones that are obvious or obvious, it, it often happens when I made changes, I mean, saying changes or trying to change the same thing in different words, and like, it got so bad at one point that, um, I started, if I had a change, if it was a main change, I just made it a comment. Because it was so hard to have this, like, the whole strikeout.
It's crazy. Yeah. Yeah, so that would be the second, eighth, ninth, eleventh.
I know, and I'm gonna do the eleven.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
YouTube's.
Oh, the YouTube's, who, who has the YouTube's?
Oh.
You have.
I have the YouTube.
I, I can give them.
Because I, I, that's the one that, the week I do.
We gotta, we gotta post them all, so that we can actually.
Um, how many views did it get?
Sixteen, seventeen, forty-six.
A couple of them were coming to me twice right now.
I know, I'm one of the thirty-three subscribers.
Alright, sorry, I, we'll do this, and then we'll get out of here, so Nancy Cleven, that's just a spelling, we know how to spell Nancy's name.
So it should be the purchase, or I'm suggesting it should be, the purchase was approved at the annual campaign in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, that's good.
Susan asked if we need to make a principal payment for this fiscal year.
Yep.
Justin responded, that.
Yep.
The other thing.
We were all so sure about that loan.
Oh my god. So basically, we just are taking the loan out and not doing anything with the money, and then having to pay and done it, which.
That's how I understand it.
Yeah.
I really don't, I don't even know.
I don't, I don't, just, I don't. The stupid thing where you can't prepay it, it just makes me nuts. Okay, anyway.
So, I mean, for the most part, that's one change, if this is one change at a time, it's always, we're on agreement, we don't.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with everything on page one.
Yeah.
And, you know.
Two.
And you'll figure out the things that are dumb. Uh. Yes, thank you for the red edition above.
So I just want to, as I go to post these, the email from Kevin, uh, number five firehouse lease in Middle Dura. The email from Kevin was asking for first year lease of sixty-three thousand plus the ninety thousand in monies set aside for capital improvements in best one, okay.
There was actually a handout, not reading, I did.
Yeah.
I could send you that.
Let me check. Yeah, can you?
Yeah.
Oh, add it to a document, it will be Frank's summary of.
Police numbers, um, financial numbers for these.
I'll get to page two. I see on page three, there's some overlapping stuff, but I can just figure it.
Yeah, we're all doing the same thing, and I trust you to fix it, so it works. When's annual cross-out on the eighth? Shouldn't say annual campaign one? You put in, but then you strip it out?
Or then, I'll, it will, it will say annual campaign one, I'm not sure why. Okay, with page four.
The provider's CSS Ventures.
Okay.
They're, they are D B A by Cameron, what that is.
Yeah.
Is that in the paperwork?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I assume Frank will continue, we're in lease agreement with the fire company.
Mm-hmm.
And Justin will work on healthcare budget, looking at having a single healthcare plan as a cushion.
In case.
In case.
Just need yours.
Okay.
Because he's doing me too, too confusing, it, it, I can't quite sort it out.
Okay.
So, town council above, in, under town meeting, we're at the bottom of page five, it should say town council should be capped. The board agreed to have town council, we could do it in this section, I must have been getting tired.
Hmm, yep.
Yeah, thanks for the page six, thank you. Um, is there a chance I gotta get this tonight?
I guess, there's a chance.
I, I.
You mean like if you, like.
Yeah, just.
Like which, which part?
Just nail him the document, the combined document.
Just the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
That's all I did, the, all the changes and everything, like, I'll handle it.
Yeah, I'd really, no, I thought you'd pick up a little later.
Any rate, any rate, you're fine. No, just, just the, uh.
Yeah.
Just the messy document, okay.
Yeah, alright, I'll move to approve the minutes of March twelfth as amended.
Second.
Alright, we'll, we'll call a vote, Frank? Yes, Susan?
Yes.
And Justin, yes. So that's unanimous approval, and, uh, and, uh, I'll go ahead and, and upload those, and all the documents. And, uh, let's talk a little bit about minutes, so I think.
I'll work on getting the, uh, four eight thing, I'll do four eight, I'll also work on getting the meetings up.
Yes, thank you, um, I'll do four nine, which is almost done, I might even, I, it might actually be done, I'll have to double check, if it's done right now, I'll just send it along. Um, and.
I've got four two, I'll figure it.
And I've got four eleven.
And, um.
So just the.
Oh, next, next, we can almost not meet, but maybe we should just meet and work on minutes.
Wouldn't be bad to get it done and out of the way, and I'm also gonna put out there, do we, and, and, we've gone back in Florida, but do we want to, what do we want to do with county, do we want to divide it up and wait on different topics?
Oh, yeah.
Um, like, do we want to just do it ad hoc and let it roll?
I think they said that probably we've been doing.
Oh, yeah.
Susan's asking, should we say, you're doing articles ten, twelve, and thirteen, and I'm doing articles eleven, fifteen, and nineteen, and you're doing article seventy? I'm not opposed, uh, I actually kind of like that idea, but obviously, to some degree, we can all speak to anything.
Right.
But like, I'm willing to take Lake Garfield District on, because there's a lot going on there, and I get included in the emails from Mike.
You're welcome to it.
And, uh, I know different people have done different things, and even written for Monterey News, ambulance, fire truck, so, et cetera, et cetera.
I mean, we kind of know what we've taken, we've done, and I'm fine with that.
But we can go through it and just say, are we comfortable, we can also go over, do we have any questions, I hope we would have already asked, but next week we can go over.
It was really, I remember when your, your mom came, she was like, were you upset that Justin answered all, like, answered all the questions? I was like, hard no. Not even a little bit.
Well, I mean, I, some questions are, it just, you know, sometimes you get really good questions, it's just, I, I, and then sometimes you get kind of.
People will go to general.
Eric's gonna be there too.
Town council.
He's gonna be there.
Town, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, Dawn is not gonna be there, but Andrew from, from Harrington G is gonna be there. And I asked the cart lady if she could make a transcript, only because Monterey News said, could she make a transcript? And she said no, her job is not making transcripts, which I understand, because there's difference between writing the words that are said at the moment, and then actually go and, and make me a transcript.
Ah, yeah, I should.
It's kind of a bummer that we can't just say, give us what you have, but it sounds like, you know, there's a hesitancy, if you're producing a transcript, it's expected to be.
A certain way, right, I got you. It is too bad that we can't just get what she, I mean, knowing that there are sometimes errors in that, I still think it's a bad.
Maybe we'll follow up and say, can we get what you did, even if it's, you can't.
Incorrect, yeah.
We can like sign away, or it says, we don't believe any of this is true, it's all wrong. We know you're not good at your job.
Oh my god, um, I still think it's cool that we have that at all, helpful.
Yeah, what was the next, well, so some places that I've been, people who have a specific hearing aid, you have a specific microphone that goes in their ear in particular. But not for town meeting, for other things.
But I, I, even though, I mean, like, I don't need a hearing aid, but sometimes it's helpful to make, because I miss a word.
Yeah. Then now she misses a word, yeah?
Yeah, well, that happens, or, you know, someone doesn't speak, somebody has a quiet voice, someone mumbles, or somebody else was talking in the room, and you've been quiet here, I mean, you know.
Um, but yeah, so next week, I think because of minutes, we will meet.
Okay.
Maybe the fall, well, we'll just see where we're at, but hopefully it'll be short, agenda, minutes, hire an office assistant.
And. Yes.
Surely thereafter. Um, alright.
Alright.
Is that a motion to adjourn?
Well, I did, did you want to? Well, I just had, yeah, if there's anything you really wanted to know.
Yeah.
I, I, I put some stuff on the website, Bear Town Mountain Road.
Yes.
You saw, I don't know if you saw that.
Yes.
There's a, the crack ceiling.
Yes.
Is happening, um, there's an open space recreation plan committee meeting on the, uh, the twenty-seventh, I think it is, and then to eleven thirty, it's a Saturday.
Oh, that's the, yeah, that's the forum.
That's the survey, that's going over the survey.
That's the forum, the public forum?
Yes.
To tell people at the survey, is it up on the website?
I, I put it on a calendar, it's, it's in the calendar.
Okay, great. If you can put it, any possibility of getting on the open space page also?
Yeah, I think so, I can put it up.
That would be great.
Yep, um, Frank, the household hazardous waste day is in lead on the May eleventh, and I, going back to John Shannon, the CSS Ventures, I spoke with him today. We're gonna try and get him here between, um, May first and May third for a sit-down, I'm trying to get Tom Roy to be here as well.
So for a handoff, is it?
Tom Roy is the guy who was doing I T work for the town.
Okay.
So.
Kind of handoff then.
And is he all good with what we did to the contract?
Yes, he said that was like their boilerplate, he said he's not wrong, he's not gonna have a problem with that, so I'll just get it to him, that's it.
Thank you.
Those were easy.
Sorry, I didn't set aside time for updates, you could.
But it's.
It did, it said town and then try to update them.
I know. I didn't really say.
Oh, okay.
Right, you got it.
Yeah, right.
Updates.
I actually spent time writing those.
Um.
Oh my god.
Just remember, everything that we talk about, everything we do in a meeting has to end up in the minutes.
That's right.
I don't know what I need.
Oh my god.
Take everything back.
Yeah, 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 don't say anything.
No, I'm just.
I know, I know, it is funny. I, and you may. May you improve your computer situation?
No, I think you just died, honestly.
You, die, died, like, not, just no matter.
No, just, yeah, the battery, so it's not a big deal. It's been twenty sixteen from when I started college, so it's been through college with me, it's been through almost three years in the select board.
We just had to.
Couple years in between.
My daughter.
I have all this one, because it's smaller, you want my old one?